Okay, good evening, everyone. We're going to call our meeting to order. Welcome to our meeting tonight. We're going to call it to order and we're going to have a roll call by our city clerk, Kathy Valdez.
The records shall reflect that all members are present.
The next thing, we're going to have a pledge of allegiance led by Councilmember Franklin tonight, and if you'll rise, please, and put your right hand over your heart.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. It's the Constitution for which it stands: One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If you please remain standing, Reverend Frank Hellick from the United Methodist Church is going to do our invocation. Thank you.
I'd like you to take a moment to center yourself in whichever way seems appropriate to you. As we pause firstly, to give thanks for these men and women who have said yes to the daunting tasks of leadership in the community. Granted, they may be guided with wisdom from within and a sense of purpose that is worthy of their high calling. Secondly, we as citizens ask for guidance and appropriate dialogue as the concerns of the community are raised and as the joys of the community are celebrated. We recognize our leaders whom we have chosen and honor their commitment. May our own wisdom be forthcoming as the issues and decisions that may lie before us are thoughtfully and satisfactorily brought to conclusion. Remind all of us to hold the welfare of all people as the central focus of our work together. Caring one for the other is a universal call and a responsibility in every expression of faith. Therefore, give us a sense of presence that comforts and supports us as we do that work. In that way, the unity of the community in decision, order, and justice will provide support, safety, and opportunity to all who are a part of it. These things we offer in thanksgiving, hope, and prayer. Amen.
Okay, in accordance with the Brown Act, I'd like to announce that as a result of convening simultaneous meetings, the members of the Buena Sanitation District will receive compensation of $147.75 for the district meeting pursuant to Buena Sanitation District Ordinance 2006-1. The next thing on our agenda is the approval of our agenda by our city manager, Patrick Johnson.
Thank you, Mayor. There are no changes to the agenda this evening.
Okay, and we did not have a closed session today. Nothing was scheduled. So, the next thing on our agenda is a presentation by our helicopter Marine Light Attack Unit 369, and it's going to be Lieutenant Colonel Nathan Marvel is going to provide the presentation.
Thank you, Amanda, for bringing up our brief. Real quick, I'd like to introduce myself. So, Lieutenant Colonel Nathan Marvel. I was born and raised in Montana. I'm currently the commanding officer of Marine Light Attack Helicopter Squadron 369. Pretty interesting unit. We're around Pendleton. I'll talk about our demographics and what we have. It's a busy time right now for the Marine Corps. A lot of work around the world, around the state of California, around the United States right now, so we are staying occupied. We appreciate you giving us this opportunity to come out and address the council tonight. Let me see if I can get the slide here. Okay, our mission, and I'll talk through this a little bit, support ground forces. So, as far as Marine Corps organization is, we are a supporting unit, and our sole purpose is to support those men and women that are on the ground, that are engaged in combat in humanitarian aid operations around the world, and we pride ourselves on that. Historically, the squadron was established in 1972 during combat operations following Vietnam, and we just recently celebrated our 40 years of service as a light attack squadron. Utility support, we do fly multiple helicopters. We're assigned, as a table of equipment, 27 helicopters, so we're getting there. We're currently in the middle of a transition between our legacy model helicopters, the UH-1 November Huey, and the H-1 Whiskey Cobra, to our upgrades, which is the Yankee Model Huey and the Zulu Model Cobra. So, you'll see newer helicopters flying around here, making noise probably a little bit around the city of Vista. We do apologize for the Sound of Freedom. Total personnel, we're at about 373 Marines, and that number fluctuates quite a bit right now. So, we are one of the larger units in the Marine Corps as far as squadrons go with that number of aircraft and that number of personnel. Flight hours, we fly on an average of about 6,000 total flight hours a year, so that's pretty impressive. But more impressive is that the work that goes into those aircraft to make them fly by the young Marines that maintain them, ensure that we have professional administrators that track the flight hours on them. So, for about every single one flight hour that I noted up there for those 6,000, we have about five to six man-hours, maintenance hours, that go into those airframes to fly them. So, it is an enduring task to keep them flying, fixing them, and fighting them on a daily basis. Majority of our Marines have been forward deployed. We've got a lot of experience, a lot of veterans in the squadron who've done tours in Iraq as well as Afghanistan, contingency operations in the Philippines, as well as across the Horn of Africa, as well as humanitarian assistance operations in countries like Nepal, as you know well. We've been out there doing it for a while. We're pretty busy. We spend probably about, on the average, two-thirds of the year away from our families, away from home, doing exercises, whether that means we're staying local here in Southern California. We're quickly getting ready to go up to beautiful 29 Palms, California on this Sunday, and the Marines pointed out to me that while we're there, deployed, working 12 on, 12 off, 24 hours a day for the next 35 to 40 days, that I'm taking away two of their 72 liberties, so I owe them some weekends when we get back. They don't let me forget that. We are at Camp Pendleton, our headquarters. Third Marine Aircraft Wing is in Miramar, California. So, our commanding general, Major General Mike Rocco, his call sign's Badfinger, is a Gunfighter alumni. When I checked into the Gunfighters in 2000, he was my first commanding officer, so it's a privilege to serve underneath him and be back here in Southern California. We spend a lot of our time out to the east in Arizona, Yuma, Arizona, working around the Chocolate Mountains for the majority of our range time and not. So, we are a busy squadron. For demographics, average age of our Marines is about 23 years old. Sergeant Major, who's sitting in the back, back here with me, Sergeant Major Buckles, our squadron senior enlisted, as well as my acting XO right now, Major Thompson, will tell you that we have about 80% of the Marine Corps that turns over every single year, 60 to 80% of young Marines that come and go. So, it's the old salts, like these guys that have been around a long time, that kind of maintain any type of consistency in the fleet, and that's how the squadron is as well. About 164 of our Marines are married, large families. We have, currently, we have 100, and it says 149, but we had a young baby boy born into the squadron the day before yesterday, so we're about 150 children in the squadron. About six days before my change of command, I was blessed with a son as well, so my family continues to grow in the Gunfighter family. We have families that do reside in Vista. We're pretty much scattered. We've got families that live as far up north as Hemet and Temecula in Riverside, and ones that come as far from the south down in Chula Vista to drive up to work at the squadron. So, we're pretty scattered. And then, like I said, out to the east, a lot in Temecula as well. So, we come from a lot of different places. Like, average deployment, about three right now, but while we're going through our transition, we've been reasonably static and haven't been deployed as much. But for a perspective, a deployment for a squadron can vary anywhere from about six months to nine months and can last to about 12 months. So, the time spent away from families, your support structure is very important to the Marines, and we call ourselves a family. We're a team, and it's very important, the relationship that the squadron, that the Marine Corps has with the city of Vista as our second family, as a home that we can come home to and receive that support. So, we thank you very much for that. We do have a family readiness program, and our family readiness, our FRO, as we call her, our family readiness officer, Crystal Gates, is here with us as well tonight. So, Crystal is born and raised in the Gunfighters. When I checked in in 2000 with my young wife as First Lieutenant Marvel, Crystal was actually our key volunteer and welcomed us into the Gunfighters and showed us the volunteer network enacted as our family readiness officer then. So, Crystal's husband and I go way back. We've done multiple combat deployments together, and I've floated around the world with him a couple times. So, what the family readiness officer does, she helps the Marines prepare for those impending deployments that we have right now. Things that I talk to the Marines about is, not only are we ready to deploy, but we're ready to employ when we get there. So, it's important that we're ready at home, that our families are prepared, that we're prepared mentally and physically to go forward, to spend time, as Marines do, expeditionary, doing our nation's bidding and keeping ourselves occupied without the stresses and the distractions at home that can happen. But also, when we get there, to be able to conduct our mission, which is to provide attack and utility helicopter support to our brothers and sisters that are on the deck. Crystal's a key link in that, and the city of Vista is a key link in that as well, preparing us back here at home, making that time that we spend together, family time, important, valued, well-invested time. So, being prepared is her primary role, and we couldn't ask for a better family readiness officer to help us do that. Few more slides. Benefits from the city of Vista, your participation, as I've said, is invaluable. It is a great opportunity. I couldn't be more excited to be the commanding officer of the Gunfighters. I tell the story that when I was at the Pentagon, which was a noble tour, wouldn't recommend it for everybody, so if you're here for your civics class, spend some time at the Pentagon. I got a lot of compliments, congratulations, but when I found out I was coming back to the Gunfighters, most of my peers said, "That's a great squadron. You can't go wrong. You've got great people. You're surrounded by a great community. Don't mess it up." So, I couldn't be more proud to be back here. The interaction that we've had with the city of Vista and the relationship we had, we have, will continue. We want to maintain that, and I know it's a give-and-take relationship, and we appreciate that very much. This will be my last slide. Like I talked about, two-way relationship, volunteer, give back to the city. It's great to see Marines out here in the city of Vista. My wife wakes me, well, I say that, my three daughters and my son wake me every Saturday morning to attend the farmer's market here in Vista, so I will be out here again this Saturday, I'm sure. It's one of my required events on my wife's schedule. So, we continue to want to have that relationship that we have with the city of Vista, and I'll close with saying again, thank you very much for your support. We're very appreciative of it, and we look forward to continuing the relationship with the city of Vista, ma'am.
Thank you. I think I can speak for everybody and tell you that how much we appreciate you and all that you do to keep all of us safe. So, thank you for all that you do and your squadron does. Okay, so, moving on. The next thing on our calendar is our consent calendar. We have items C-1 through C-11, and the recommendations on the following consent calendar will be enacted in one motion unless an item is removed from the calendar. And any member of the public can remove an item by submitting a request to speak card to our clerk secretary. Items removed from the consent calendar will be considered immediately following the adoption of the calendar. So, with that, I'll ask Deputy Mayor Rigby.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I would like to pull for discussion C-8, please.
C-8, was that?
Yes, ma'am.
C-8, okay. Councilmember Aguilera.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I was just going to go ahead and recommend or make a motion to accept the rest of the consent items.
Do I have a second on that motion? I have a second from Deputy Mayor Rigby, so please cast your ballots or your votes.
Would the city clerk note my no vote on item C-11?
That passes unanimously with that one no vote on C-11 by Councilmember Campbell. Okay, so the next thing, we'll have a C-8, and it's revisions to the standard conditions for ABC license uses. And I will turn that over to, would you like a report?
I don't necessarily need a report. I just have a couple of questions. This is to amend it to include drive-through alcohol sales. I just wanted to know, first question is, what prompted the need to include a ban of alcohol sales through drive-through windows?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Ally Zimmerman, Assistant City Manager. With the implementation last year of the minor use permit for alcohol, the staff doesn't have discretion to add conditions to a license the way we would potentially, we need to come to the city council and have the minor use go through. We have a couple of Starbucks restaurants at this point that have potentially would be or have applied for ABC licenses, and a couple of them have the drive-through window. If we don't condition it, then it is possible, even though it's not a part of their business model, but it's possible that a business may be allowed to sell alcohol through the drive-through window. So, that is where that came from.
Okay, thank you. Is there nothing in, and the city attorney might be able to answer this, is there nothing in state law prohibiting, I mean, drinking and driving is an issue. Is there nothing already on the books prohibiting alcohol sales through drive-through windows?
Deputy Mayor Rigby, not to my knowledge. The principal prohibition, obviously, is the open container law.
Okay. And then, just another question, kind of a sidebar to the issue that we're voting on tonight, but it's still within, it's still in a lot of these, is the restriction on happy hours and live, or, I'm sorry, live entertainment. Happy hour is another discussion. The live entertainment would be only if there is a particular permit.
Correct. Live entertainment is a separate license under a separate ordinance.
Right. Do we know how many have been issued in the city for live entertainment, karaoke, anything like that?
I'm going to defer to Cheryl Master, analyst.
Total, I believe, off the top of my head, right now, are about 25.
Okay, okay, thank you. I appreciate you coming here and answering my questions and giving me a little clarification. And with that, I would go ahead and move that we accept C-8 as written.
I'll second that.
Did you want to, okay, okay. That motion passes unanimously. Moving on, our next item, our discussion items. Items scheduled for discussion generally require detailed explanation by the staff and the agency member input. So, tonight, we have two discussion items, and the first one is a proposed general plan amendment and specific plan amendment at 2100 West San Marcos Boulevard. Community Development Director John Conley will present the staff report.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Principal Planner Michael Wrestler will be giving the staff report.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the city council. Michael Wrestler, Community Development Department, Principal Planner. The discussion item before you tonight is in regards to a general plan amendment as well as a specific plan amendment for the property located at 2100 West San Marcos Boulevard. The request includes a general plan amendment to change the land use designation for the site from research-light industrial to mixed use, an amendment to the specific plan, the Vista Business Park specific plan, to create a new mixed-use planning area for the subject site, and ultimately, a site development plan, a tentative subdivision map, special use permit, condominium housing permit for the development of 196 condominium units as well as a 100-room hotel on the subject property. The 17.1-acre site is located on the north side of San Marcos Boulevard, East Business Park Drive. The site is currently vacant land that's been ref graded to accommodate five industrial parcels. The site is surrounded by industrial uses to the northwest as well as residential uses to the east and to the south in the city of San Marcos. Here are two photographs of the site. The top photograph was taken from the intersection of San Marcos Boulevard and Acacia Drive, looking northwest. The bottom photograph was taken from San Marcos Boulevard, looking east. The existing general plan land use designation for the site is research-light industrial. The proposed general plan amendment would change the land use designation to mixed use. The site is located within the Business Park Specific Plan Planning Area B, and the proposed specific plan amendment would create a new mixed-use planning area for the subject site. The proposed project would develop the site with a mixed-use development consisting of 196 two- and three-story condominium units as well as a 100-room four-story hotel. The two-story condominium units are depicted in light brown and located to the southerly edge of the site. The three-story condominium units would be depicted in dark brown and located towards the center of the site, with the hotel site being colored blue. Vehicular access would be provided by a private drive off of San Marcos Boulevard, which would separate the residential component of the project from the hotel site. The proposed development includes two- and three-story condominiums as well as a four-story hotel. The site itself has been designed in terms of architecture to be based around an Irving-Gill architectural style. The applicant is requesting the use of the mixed-use zone parking standards. The site has been designed to accommodate 100 parking spaces within the hotel site, which equates to one parking space per hotel room. The condominium development would provide a total of 466 parking spaces, which has been designed to meet the mixed-use zoning standards, which requires two parking spaces per two-bedroom unit, 2.25 parking spaces for a three-bedroom unit, as well as 2.75 parking spaces for a four-bedroom unit. Ultimately, if the site was, excuse me, if the site was parked with the citywide parking standards for multifamily residential development, the site would be required to maintain a total of 607 parking spaces. Access to the site would be provided by a ride-in, ride-out driveway off of San Marcos In addition to the condominium hotel development proposal before you tonight, the applicant has provided two alternative development scenarios for city council consideration. Alternative Plan One consists of 214 condominium units, a 4,000-square-foot commercial area, as well as a transit occupancy tax in Lufi. Alternative Plan Two consists of 196 condominiums, 4,000 square foot of commercial space, as well as a 78-unit extended stay hotel. Staff is requesting the city council provide direction in regards to the proposed general plan amendment as well as a specific plan amendment. If the proposed land use changes are supportive, staff would process the applications, and the project would be subject to approval of the site development plan, tentative subdivision map, a special use permit, as well as a condominium housing permit. That concludes staff's report, and we're here to answer any questions.
We have four speakers. Would you like to hear the speakers first? Okay. Okay, our first speaker will be Nenia Hammond. She's the applicant.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. Thank you for having us here this evening to hear our project. My name is Nenia Hammond, and I'm with Integral Communities. I'm the project manager for Vista Palomar. We are excited about the opportunity to implement a smart-growth mixed-use project in the city of Vista. The combination of a business-serving hotel and a for-sale residential project will provide a significant tax benefit to the city of Vista. The project creates both temporary and permanent jobs, the hotel will serve Vista businesses, and the for-sale housing puts residents close to the Vista retail and employment community. Our mixed-use project is a transition from the northerly-led industrial to the southerly and easterly residential. In requesting this land use change, we have provided technical studies to staff, and in nearly every situation, the mixed-use project is less impactful than the existing zoning. I'm happy to answer any questions you have or respond to any of the public comments in response to your questions.
Do you have any questions right now for her? No, okay.
Thank you.
Well, maybe later they'll have some. Okay. Our next speaker is Wayne Capella.
I'd first like to thank Mr. Wrestler and the council for notifying us of this meeting and allowing us to speak this evening. I am Bill Capella. This is Frank Helmlinger, speaking on behalf of the Las Vegas Pacificus Community of San Marcos, where we share a fence line with the proposed development. I'd like to also introduce several of our residents who are here tonight. By raise of hand, please, to show that we are deeply concerned about this development. We'll be brief and only address three main topics in order to convey to you our opposition to the proposed residential hotel plan. We wish to emphasize upfront that we have no objections to the current light industrial permit. We like that idea. Our three major concerns are basically traffic, density, and impact on our existing water infrastructure. Traffic on San Marcos Boulevard is already heavily burdened. The addition of more traffic signals or U-turns at Business Park Drive and at Avenue de las Rosas would severely exasperate the already turbulent traffic. For us, allowing U-turns at Avenue de las Rosas, our entrance, would clutter our entrance and increase the probability of more traffic accidents. Severe accidents are already too frequent at that intersection, the last one being merely two weeks ago. By the way, Vista Palomar, as designed, would be the only residential development between the Interstate 5 and Rancho Santa Fe Road that would not have either a traffic signal or turn lanes in the median. Why would we want to push our luck? A subset of the traffic issues is the need for an emergency exit for Vista Palomar. We do not see how such a path that exists along our fence line could possibly be prepared to accommodate emergency vehicles. The proposed density to us is simply not healthy. With 196 units and a suggested population of two to four persons per unit, it's a potential of 400 to nearly 800 people. How many of these are children? And with no significant playgrounds and the pets, what's going to happen to them? And by the way, hundreds more vehicles. The basic concept does not seem smart. And what happens if the condos don't sell, and quite frankly, we don't think they will with no amenities? People who go into condos, they want pools, they want gyms, they want services, they want accommodations. They're not here. We don't even understand how another hotel, adding to the density problem, could possibly be financially viable. There are already so many hotel and motel rooms along the Palomar Boulevard track, it just seems incredible that another one could be possible and worthy of building. And more people mean more vehicles, means more traffic. The traffic just compounds one atop the other. At what point are we to arrive with the conclusion that traffic levels are unacceptable? Frank, would you like to continue on?
Sir, your time is up.
Go ahead.
Does he have, do you have, did you fill out a, did you fill out a? You can fill out a speaker slip if you want to and then come back. He can, he can fill out a speaker slip. You're allowed three minutes.
Okay.
Okay. Ken Burcherley.
Good evening.
And you have three minutes, sir.
Sorry?
You have three minutes.
Oh, yes, I'm aware of that.
Okay, thank you.
For reminding me.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you for allowing me to speak. I'm the president of the HOA, that's the representative here. We are a senior.
Can you talk, talk right into the microphone? There you go. Yeah.
We are a senior community of over 55, but the average age in our community is well over 70. We're very interested in safety, traffic, and security. As Bill has already mentioned, that traffic light is our only major way to get in and out of our community, and we're very concerned about that. There's been a lot of accidents, there's been fatalities. January 1st was the last accident. All we're doing is increasing that risk. This is a senior community. All of you here know senior people. Some of you are senior people, maybe. I hope not yet.
I am one.
Okay. You're all going to be interested in this in the future on how your grandparents and parents are treated. We need safety, and this development does not give us safety. In their presentations, never has it mentioned about traffic. San Marcos will not put in a light there, so our light becomes the focus for U-turns. It's already a focus for us in and out of our community. And like I said, there's been a lot of accidents. From Rancho Santa Fe to Business Park on the north side of San Marcos is all senior citizen territory, with the exception of a little bit in the beginning and a little bit of the end that's businesses. There is no residential other than senior communities. Why not treat us with a little respect? Think about it, okay? Don't just think about the money. Think about our quality of life. It's very important to our community. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Nikki Hobson.
Good evening, Mayor, city council. Thank you very much. My name is Nikki Hobson, and I live at 2070 Ridgeline Avenue. And tonight, I'm representing. And tonight, I'm representing South Vista Communities. Our interest in this development is slightly different than the, the local residents, but it, it does raise some interesting issues. First of all, there is a limited amount of, of industrial property in Vista remaining to be developed, so rezoning these parcels to mixed use, allowing residential development, sets a bad precedent. If it is approved, it, first of all, it trades off scarce business park land, which is needed to create jobs, for more multifamily residences, which are not particularly needed at this time. If the rezoning is approved, will this lead to more and more requests to use business park land for residential? How can you say no to future requests if you grant this one? Second, if the rezoning is allowed to, to allow mixed use is ultimately approved, the density should be reduced, preferably eliminating those units that would overlook the existing homes on Avenida Michelle. By the way, though, it is good to see condos being proposed instead of apartments. That's far superior. In addition, we think that citywide parking and landscape standards should be applied, not the stringent mixed, mixed-use standards. There are always parking problems for this type of a development. The limited access to the development, a single entry and exit point, is a major concern. Adding a traffic signal so close to those already existing would have a very detrimental impact on traffic flow, and I agree with the previous speaker that, that would force people to go down to the next light and make a U-turn and just complicate life for everybody. And finally, I would like to just repeat my very first point, which is, we need to preserve industrial park land for industrial park use. Thank you.
Thank you. Charles Butler.
Good evening, and thank you very much for allowing me to speak before you today. I'm the property owner of the commercial property above the lot. There are two, about 10 acres up there in the corner. And I, I don't want to say I'm opposed to this project. I'm only opposed if it adversely affects what is there now. So this property was zoned commercially. We own a factory, we have 100 people working there, and we are an actual manufacturing plant making things in America. My concern, and I've worked with Nynia, is to figure out how to mitigate the, the situation so we can have the best of both. And, and my feeling is, if we can work together so that everybody's needs are met, I'm very happy to do that. I just don't want, I can give you an example. Ted Weeks is our developer on this project, and he's a neighbor and a friend of mine, did a beautiful job. We finished building our first project in 1999, and they started building houses across the street. And we started getting complaints that our lights that were required by the city to be on at night for protection was, was bothering the neighbors. And it's like, I can't win. Now, I've been manufacturing since 1970 here in San Diego. This is my third district that I've been to. I've moved out, moved out because I've been chased out by the change in the zoning. Don't have any problem with that. I understand, America changes, things evolve. But by working together and trying to mitigate this, my comments to Nynia was, as long as you guys take into consideration the long-term effect the tenants are going to have by saying, oh, you know, the noise from the factory, well, we work seven days a week, sometimes 24 hours a day. You know, the noise of the factory is okay. Or build a wall, or put up enough trees so that all this is mitigated, or deal with the problem with your subdivision or whatever you want to put in there. Because I believe in America, you have the right to do certain things, and we should all try to work together. So I don't see this as a real problem. I just think we have to figure out how to mitigate the problems. So I don't want to have to change my whole manufacturing 10 acres up there, 105,000 square feet, because there's a new tenant in town. So if there's a way to mitigate, I'm more than happy. If there's not, then of course, why would we change the zoning? Thank you.
Thank you, sir. William Capella.
Thank you for allowing me back. My third area, of course, was the impact to our water systems in Las Briesas.
What happened to William?
I am William.
Or Bill? Oh, you're William?
Yes, ma'am.
Oh, did you already speak?
Yes, you told me to put another card in.
I thought your friend, I thought the person that was with you was going to speak.
I'll just continue if I may.
Is it okay? No, they're saying it's not okay.
Okay, Frank? Okay? He probably even knows this topic better than I do, anyway.
Okay. This way, this way.
Sorry for this. That's where I'll lift off.
Can I put his, I need, he needs to have a card. Okay, Bill.
I apologize for.
It's, you're okay. It's okay. I apologize too, so you're okay.
I was so glad to see, to hear a gentleman from the industrial park address the, address the board. Looking out from our residential area, the industrial park, owners up there have been terrific neighbors. The lights they have to have on don't disturb us. They hardly make any noise, have landscaping, and they've been really nice. The potential for negative impact to our existing freshwater and sewage infrastructure could be serious. We are attempting to discuss these matters with Belicetus Water Company to determine if they can assure us they can accommodate the increased capacity. We just replaced the asphalt in our development to the tune of $500,000, and we would hate to see Belicetus have to rip up our streets. Also, the urban runoff is programmed to flow into our protected ravine, potentially affecting the resident floor and animal life. We have no problem with the volume of runoff from a light industrial facility, but how much worse will the runoff be from an overly dense residential area? In close, we strongly emphasize again that we fully endorse the current permitted light industrial development, but the senior residents of Las Briesas Pacificas consider the residential concept to be a threat to our calm lifestyle. For most of the senior citizens here, moving is not an option. We would like to continue enjoying our environment. Also, in the signatures for the petition, we have signatures from the residents of the Laurel's and of Rancho Durado. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. That concludes, that concludes our speakers on this issue. We need to provide some direction to our staff, so I'm going to go down and ask our council members, and we'll start with Deputy Mayor at Bigby.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. My concern with this property, I'm not in favor of changing the, the zoning to include residential. I'd like to keep it industrial-light, light industrial. So that's where I'm, I'm on that position to begin with. But second of all, if it were to be done as residential, I have some serious concerns with the design and the architecture of it, but also the fact that it would be done under mixed-use guidelines, design guidelines, and not the standard residential. So I have a question, and please help, help me clarify this, if you, if you might. Was it my understanding that the parking particularly, because we know parking is bad all over the city of Vista, I know San Marcos has parking problems and traffic problems as well, there would be no place really for residents or guests of residents for this development to park on San Marcos Boulevard, Palomar Airport Road? And the total parking spaces would be, for the condominiums, would be 466 spaces under the mixed-use development guidelines? And did you say that it would be, if it were under the standard residential designation guideline, that there would be 607? That's one of the design discrepancies between the mixed-use designation, building residences in a, in a mixed-use area versus building residences in a residential designated area. So I would, I would vote no on this, just on the face of it, because I don't believe that we should change the designation from industrial light to residential. But I would also like to hold off on deciding this until we can revisit the differences between our residential guidelines in a mixed-use designated area versus residential designated area, because I think that we need to have a little bit more of a consistency in our residential guidelines in all areas where residential is allowed to be built. As we have already seen, particularly with the Avalon development on Breeze Hill at Melrose, that's a mixed-use area. The mixed-use residential design guidelines really don't fit for the neighborhood, and it's created a lot of problems in the neighborhood. So I would, I would like to not see us do anything approving a mixed-use residential development until we've had a chance to revisit those particular guidelines, but for this project, just on the face of it, I'm a no on it. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Councilmember Campbell.
Thank you, Mayor. So a couple of points were brought up by a few of the speakers, and I'd like to ask Mr. Conley, you might know the answer to this, in regards to daily trip traffic generated by light industrial based on a potential square footage of buildings that would be put in, and the equivalent daily vehicle trips made with the proposed project. So my understanding would be that if we allowed this to be fully developed as a light industrial, the number of vehicle equivalents that would be making trips to the site would actually be higher or somewhat equivalent to the residential car trips that would be made.
The applicant has prepared an analysis of the trips that would be generated by industrial development on the site under the current configuration. It's a five-lot industrial parcel map, so assuming maximum development of all five lots. It's estimated that the project would generate about 2,200 trips a day, and the proposed project would generate about 2,300 trips a day, so it's slightly higher.
So it's about equivalent. And assuming that a industrial site was put in place here, you'd actually see larger vehicles, semi-truck vehicles, probably making more deliveries to an industrial site versus passenger cars that would be making trips in this residential development. The other thing I would like to point out is that one of the issues, I think, causes a significant traffic problem, especially on San Marcos Boulevard, Melrose, East Vista Way, is employees of the industrial zones are living in Temecula, Marietta, Hemet, farther away in some cases, and are traveling into town to go to work. So that creates a lot of vehicular traffic that goes through those major thoroughfares throughout the city, that goes to the freeways. You know, if you look at our major roadways at 5:00 in the evening or before, earlier in the morning, it's not vehicle traffic that's generated from within the city of Vista, the new developments that we've put in. It's primarily out-of-town trip traffic, which congests the roadways. And that's a problem because over time, cities, Vista's guilty of this, every city is guilty of it. Over the last couple of decades, we've been very poor at planning for putting jobs and housing in close proximity to each other. And by doing so, we've generated massive problems with transit, in that people are driving 30, 40 miles to get to work, which clogs up the roadways. There's not enough tax revenue to build more lanes. We could build a 20-lane freeway, and within a few years, that's going to have gridlock on it as well. So it's important to take into consideration factors that we have thousands and thousands of jobs in near proximity to this proposed mixed-use residential development. These proposed housing units, in my opinion, provide opportunities for employees that are already working within our business park in Vista to have a place to live and have their job be nearby. That's responsible planning, in my opinion, for moving forward, and this is a model example for developing a site that's set vacant for many, many years. And to my knowledge, there's no proposed light industrial development on this site, and this is not a location moving forward in the future to put light industrial. It's our responsibility as a council to look for the best interests of our community, the city, the long-term vitality, and making sure that we're able to develop the city in such a way that recognizes there's changes over time. And continuing the zoning just for the sake of saying we need to continue light industrial zoning, maybe something will be built there in the future, is not responsible planning for the future. Obviously, housing is in short supply in Vista, not only in Vista, but in North County in general. Housing throughout San Diego County is in desperate need for us to be able to provide units across the, the board, from apartments to condos to small townhomes. There's not enough on the market. And if we want to continue to be able to attract the best and the brightest in business and create new job opportunities, we need to have adequate housing. And this is a sort of development, sort of an infill development, next to jobs, next to major roadways. This is a model example for rezoning. The only thing that I do think we need to look at is the parking, and I know that we're going to be having a workshop coming up in February regarding citywide parking standards. I think the problems that have been brought up, not only by the speakers here tonight, but numerous times previously regarding apartments and condos and on-street parking, is the management on those locations, because frequently, there's two parking spaces, three parking spaces per unit, but they're not utilized. You know, we heard a year ago from residents of an apartment complex saying it was inconvenient to park around back, so they were parking on the street. It's examples like that that create the illusion, in some cases, of a parking situation that is more serious than it is. So I want to take a little bit more of a look in the future at our workshop. What's the actual parking problem? What are other cities doing? Does it work there? Do we need some residential parking permits in some areas to prove, so that we don't have three families living in an apartment unit and parking five cars on the street? Those are the types of scenarios that we need to take a closer look at, besides just saying, I don't like the parking standard, we need four cars per unit. That doesn't make sense for a lot of these developments. So those are my issues. I do think we do need to look at the hotel and make sure that there's adequate balance there. If they can't get a hotel to come in sooner, we do need that in lieu TOT, and I would encourage staff to, to look at that and see what the options are on that.
Thank you. I would just tell you, parking is an issue with me also, and I would, I would want to see not the, the mixed-use parking standards, but the standard residential parking standards. And especially if there, if there was, if there, if there isn't a hotel, then I don't want to see that built up and then have parking, because there's no other option in this area right here to park. There's no places on the streets or anything to park. So it has to be, it has to be parked, and it has to have extra parking, so I'm, I'm all over getting more parking in that area. I think it needs a traffic light, and I'm hoping San Marcos will, I would, I would require the developer to do that, but I'm hoping San Marcos will allow that, because it's on San Marcos property. So I would, otherwise, I see right turns in and right turns out, and then they're going to go down and make U-turns at, at the light at that San Marcos development that you are all from. They're going to make U-turns down there if we don't have a traffic light, so I would encourage San Marcos to do that. And, and like you said, there's more traffic, the heavy traffic trips with trucks and things if it's, if we leave it industrial. So I think it would be heavier traffic with that. So, and I prefer condos. I hope that they would do condos. I don't know if they will, but I would prefer to have condos, because I think that people that live in condos have more buy-in to the community. And, but I, I agree that there's, there'd be a place to live when they're close to jobs, and I think that that'd be a good, good place for the housing. So I'm, I approve of the change in the zoning. So with that, I will call on Councilmember Franklin.
Thank you, Mayor. Could I ask you a couple of questions, just to address some things that were brought up? This zoning here goes back to, when was the original zoning established?
When the business park plan was adopted around '93, I believe.
So we're going on 23 years?
Correct.
And I know this property's turned over a few times, but ultimately, while the rest of the business park has generally been developed, and by the way, what's that number? What, what's the remaining land, developable land in the business park for light industrial use?
There are very few parcels that remain in the business park. Within this specific plan, there's probably less than four or five parcels that are still available for development.
Is this one unique among those remaining parcels in its Is this one unique among those remaining parcels in its arterial access and in that it has residential housing surrounding it? What I'm getting at is, to address a very good point that was brought up, is this is probably one of the only remaining industrial sites that could be viable for a housing project where the remaining sites probably would be very incongruous with surrounding use. Does that seem accurate?
That's true. The remainder of the sites are interior to the park, so this is the only one at the periphery.
This site's a little unique, and I wonder if that's not one of the reasons. Do you think that's one of the reasons that it hasn't been developed yet?
It was only graded a few years ago. I think the access to it has been an issue based on the ownership's representation and the fact that it's adjacent to residential and major arterials like you indicated.
Yeah. Well, I agree with the safety issue that so many who live at that intersection have brought up, and I would be reluctant to believe that the City Council of San Marcos wouldn't address that safety issue by putting a signal in there. And I think it behooves them to work with the developer to make sure that that, by the way, that signal can be activated when cars are waiting, giving deference to traffic on San Marcos Boulevard, so that if there's through traffic on San Marcos, the individual turning left to go in is the one who waits, while the person who's traveling on San Marcos Boulevard has priority. And then the queue builds, and when there's a queue and there's no traffic on San Marcos Boulevard, ideally, the computer accesses the left turn. If we had developed a light industrial scenario here, clearly, there would be a significant amount of traffic, and yes, it would include some, some large trucks that would deliver materials. That's consistent with every other product, with every other property in there. So I think we were looking, whether we develop this light industrial or for residential, we're going to have a traffic issue. And we're not going to not allow somebody to use this land. It belongs to them. They've got a right to develop it. You know, we obviously have an interest in how it's developed, but there's, this traffic issue was going to happen one way or another. Because the city of San Marcos has possession of the jurisdiction of the roadway there, it's going to be up to our neighbors in San Marcos, and those of you who live next to the project and who would be extremely impacted, to go and visit your council members and ask them to work with the developer, make a sensible plan about how to address the traffic situation. You know, the ostrich effect, no, I'm sorry, the ostrich effect here isn't going to be successful. We've got a, as was said by the industrial property neighbor to the north there, we've got to kind of work together to make this something that's workable for all of us. And I, I think we've got a good developer that's willing to work with their neighbors and willing to make some, you know, concessions and compromises. So now's the time to speak up about what'll make this a better project. And then generally, I have been in favor of building more for-sale housing. We've approved, in fact, we are leading the county in apartment permits. This is a for-sale opportunity where people can buy a home that, you know, a working couple, working in the business park could probably afford to purchase a home here, and it's a good housing opportunity. And I think people are definitely looking for those opportunities in our city. And so for those reasons, I am supportive.
Councilmember Aguilera.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So I just, I actually just have some questions. Number one, if they're not able to park on the property, where would they park? Is there, I mean, is it just no option?
Designated location, and no, there's no parking along San Marcos Boulevard.
Okay. So then, my next question is, if we increase parking, wouldn't that increase the number of cars? And therefore, the number of cars on the road, traffic and all that? I mean, is that really?
Well, I don't know that the number of trips is driven by the number of parking spaces. It certainly provides more options for people to own more cars, and so in that regard, that's possible, but.
But I'm thinking, if I move into a place, and I know that I have 2.75 parking spots, essentially three spots, but I, you know, but I've got four cars, four drivers, I might go look somewhere else, wouldn't I?
Right.
I would think.
That's what the developer's counting on.
Yeah. So, I mean, I'm not sure that just adding parking is going to solve some of the issues that we're discussing. And then the other thing is, I do, how are we addressing the noise issue with this project and the neighbors, the neighboring industrial?
At this point, we're not addressing it. We are simply allowing this project to move forward with the understanding that industrial was there first, and they have the right to operate their property in accordance with the specific plan allowances, which have a higher decibel threshold. So those condominiums, if they are built there, could be subject to some higher noise standards. There's nothing in our code that says that's a violation unless it, you know, falls under a specific residential zoning. But when you have adjacent uses like this, you combine the two standards, you get to the median of the standard, so it would automatically allow for a higher threshold.
I guess my question is, would, is there any way that the neighboring industrial properties would be limited by us adding this or making this change?
Not if we acknowledge that at the time of approval, no. It can be written into the specific plan amendment for this action, if that's.
I think that's something I think would be necessary, so that 20 years from now, that doesn't become an issue.
Okay.
Thank you.
Deputy Mayor Rigby.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Conley, I have a question for you. There's been some discussion, and I agree completely, on the traffic issue that we already have on that road, and the traffic coming in and out of that development, and then going back down to have to make a U-turn. And the discussion that that is the city of San Marcos property and that is their jurisdiction, has there been any discussion, pardon me, any discussion at all with the city of San Marcos regarding putting in a street light there or a traffic light?
Yes, the applicant has approached the city staff, the engineering department in San Marcos. We also sent them the plans of the project when they were initially submitted to us. Their comment letter is in the staff report, and they've identified that they do not support placing a traffic signal anywhere between the two existing signals on this project frontage at the current time.
And then, thank you. My next question is, if this were to go through for the change, allowing the mixed-use residential, is that what it would be designated as of tonight, would be mixed-use residential?
No, absolutely not. All we're looking for tonight is that the council is generally supportive of the concept of changing the plan. The applicant has to spend a significant amount of time and resources to get to an entitlement, to get to an approval, a public hearing where the council would be reviewing their project. We don't want to send them down that road unless we feel like they have council support on these types of land use changes where they're asking to change a use and it could affect a lot of surrounding properties. We like to bring these issues to the council for discussion to make sure that there's adequate support before we pursue that path.
The reason I ask is because I do have, and we've discussed this before, serious concerns about the difference between, like I said earlier, mixed-use residential versus standard residential. Is there still an opportunity, if we were to revisit those standards and change them, because it's not just the parking standard, but it's some of the design standards, the setback standards that are different, that create some problems, is there still an opportunity, should this be done tonight, voted to approve tonight, is there still an opportunity that we change those standards that would still affect this application?
In this case, the applicant is asking for us to change our general plan and our zoning, so the council has ultimate discretion in how this project is reviewed. So if you say, "Yes, the land use change is fine, but I don't like the zoning," we can go back and evaluate whatever type of zoning standards we want to apply for this project. It's a specific plan amendment, so we can write whatever zoning we want into the specific plan.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure I had my timeline correct. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Councilmember Campbell.
Thank you, Mayor. So, Councilmember Aguilera brought up an excellent point that I was going to save for discussion in the future, but this is an excellent example of a site where parking availability drives the number of cars that someone's going to park and have as a property owner. We could say hypothetically, there's one parking spot per unit, and buyers are going to know that you have one parking spot per unit. There's no opportunity to have four cars parked on the street. So, in terms of parking standard for this site, and the mayor, you brought up concern over the parking standard, that's going to be driven by this whole factor of how many parking spots are available at the time of purchase. So I don't see ever, in this particular site, being an issue with off-site parking making an impact in the neighborhood. There's just no opportunity for that. So this is a purely market-driven factor. So if there's two parking spots available, the buyer at the time of purchase knows they're only ever going to have the opportunity for two parking spaces. And Councilmember Aguilera did bring up, and I think there have been studies done in Northern California, San Francisco specifically, in terms of parking availability, the increase in availability of parking drives increased traffic, because people are buying the units with the intention of having three cars, because there's three parking spaces available. If there's only one space or two spaces available, those buyers with additional cars and additional drivers in the family quite simply won't purchase here. So we could have an impact on the daily trip traffic based on parking availability on this site. So you brought up an excellent point, that those studies have been done elsewhere, and there is that correlation. It's just in Vista, we don't normally have spaces like this, to where we're able to control that with somewhat of a definite outcome. There's no spillover effect in this case. So if the developer wants to utilize our mixed-use zoning parking standards, that's going to drive their market value for their property, not us dictating to them by some personal, you know, our personal opinion and desire that you have 700 parking spaces, which I think they know what their market value they're seeking is. They know how many parking spaces they're looking to have. And because there's no negative externality of spillover parking in this neighborhood, I'm perfectly in favor of allowing them the mixed-use parking standard. With that said, I would ask the city attorney, do we need, or maybe, Mr. Conley, do we need a motion to provide direction?
No, this is discussion only tonight.
Right. I'm just, do you have enough direction at this point?
Yes, I believe we have input from all the council members.
I have one more speaker.
Okay.
I have one more. He said, it says one sentence on it. But before you say that, I don't buy you guys on that parking thing. I don't buy that. What happens when you have a couple of friends over and you need some extra parking? And if that was true, look at the apartments in Vista, and they know when they move in and they have two bedrooms, that they have allowed so many parking places, and it just doesn't work. These people will park anywhere they can. And so I don't, I know you say that, but I, it's like, I don't believe that.
I totally understand, but I think that this particular site's a little bit unique in terms of, there's not the opportunity for that bad behavior to spill over. I mean, just look at the aerial photo. People aren't going to walk a mile to park their car at night somewhere else, and it's not allowable.
No, they're not. They're going to park everywhere in there. So anyway, we'll talk about that later, but I need this last speaker, Michael Nelson. You have the last word, and it says one sentence. I hold you to the one sentence? It might be a run-on sentence.
A very short one. I'll introduce myself and then say one sentence.
Okay, okay.
My name is Mike Nelson. I've lived on Avenida Michelle, the westernmost street in Las Brisas Pacificas for over 15 years, and I am a retired Navy hospital corpsman. Now, my one-sentence statement is, if this development is approved, as it's shown up there, I will have 50 feet behind my house and 50 feet above my house, the master bedroom, a three-story condo. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Okay, so, you have enough direction, John?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. So with that, this is not a vote tonight, so that's, so that we'll move on to our second discussion issue, which is our local bidder preference. And our economic development director, Kevin Ham, will introduce this item. Hold on, Kevin. Give them just a minute till they're, could you guys kind of be quiet as you're weak your way out, so we can continue with our meeting?
Yeah.
Yeah, just let them clear out for a minute, and then we'll go ahead.
All right. Well, I'm a bit disappointed. I thought they were here for us. Good evening, Mayor and members of the council. I'm Kevin Ham, Director of Economic Development for the city of Vista, and with me is Michael Luna. He is our economic development specialist, and he will be giving the presentation this evening.
Good evening, Mayor and member city council. My name is Michael Luna. I'm the economic development specialist here. At the November 10, 2015 city council meeting, and the city council discussed city of Vista's local bidder preference policy as part of the award of a contract. To provide counsel with the history and components of the policy, City Manager Johnson asked staff to bring the local bidder policy back to city council for review. The current policy for local bidder preference was introduced and adopted in 2012, which added a 5% matching option for local businesses during the formal bidding process. In 2014, the municipal code was again amended, and they added the 5% matching option for local business entities to the informal bidding process as well. A local business entity is one that means, meets all the criteria, has a principal place of business located within the city, holds a city of Vista business license that has been in effect for at least six months prior to the issuance or request for bids or proposals, and employs at least two full-time or four part-time employees whose primary residence is located within the city of Vista, or if the business has no employees, is at least 50% owned by one or more persons whose primary residences are located within the city of Vista. The policy allows a local business entity in their formal or informal proposal, if it was within 5% of the lowest bid, be given the opportunity to match the low bid of a non-local company and be moved to the first position in the contract award process. For example, if a local business entity has a bid of $50,000 and a non-local business has a bid of $49,600, the local business entity would have the opportunity to reduce its initial bid to match the bid of the non-local business. This is because when a local business entity is within 5% of the lowest bid, they may be deemed the lowest bidder, if they agree in writing, to reduce its bid to match the bid of the non-local business within three days of the city's request to match. So as you see on this example here, the local bidder would, wins this bid as the difference falls within 5%, and the city will pay the lower amount of $49,600, as a local bidder would agree to. A survey was conducted in December of 2015, just last year, to determine if other cities in San Diego County had local bidder preference policies. Seventeen cities surrounding Vista were surveyed in San Diego County. Six cities had a 1% local bidder preference, and three cities had a 2% bidder preference policy. The remaining eight cities did not have policies regarding local bidder preference at all. For the cities that had a local bidder preference, the policies and specifics of their implementation really did vary in wording, but generally, they all follow an example from Poway. The sample on the screen from Poway shows, again, a local bidder would bid $50,000, and a non-local bidder would bid $49,600. The difference between those amounts is $400, which falls under the 1% bidder preference. So in this example, the award would be awarded to the local bidder in city of Poway, but city of Poway would be paying a higher. City of Poway would be paying a higher amount of $50,000. Vista has the only revenue-neutral policy, which increases the opportunities to award agreements to local companies without requiring the city to pay a higher rate than was proposed by the lowest bidder. If a local business entity chooses not to match that lowest bid, there is no requirement that they must do so. It should also be noted that most cities who pay the local business entities more than the lowest bidder, when awarding the contract, do so based on the assumption that local preference should be equal to the amount of local sales tax generated by the local business entity. For example, most cities receive 1% taxable sales, so they give the local business entity a 1% credit. If the city has a local use tax, they might also add those taxes as a credit calculation towards that bidder, local bidder. Thanks for your time. If you have any questions, myself and Kevin Ham are here to answer those for you.
Councilmember Campbell.
Thank you, Mayor. So, as was discussed previously, Councilman Franklin and I kind of brought this up at one of the meetings. I don't feel our current policy adequately addresses the need to provide an advantage for local businesses within the City of Vista. I understand that the prior council's desire to give an opportunity for local businesses to match our lowest bid received from a non-local bidder, our policy's probably one of the more simplistic ones from a revenue-neutral standpoint. San Diego County, there's not a lot of cities that provide a revenue or a percentage matching for local businesses, as do other cities like the City of Los Angeles, the City of Sacramento, the State of California, which provides a much more in-depth policy that addresses local business entities, small businesses, disabled veteran-owned enterprises, that really engages those businesses to encourage them to participate with doing business with local government. Because it's not often an easy task to undertake. I personally have done it in the past with other cities. Some cities are wonderful to work with, some not so much. And I don't want us to be the city that seems like we're trying to give local businesses the short end of the stick, when we could be a partner in helping to grow local businesses, to create local jobs, for a couple of reasons. Doing business with local businesses generally means that we are able to work with that business more readily if there's a problem with that order. They're locally based, they have an incentive to continue to provide quality service, to do business with the city again in the future. Secondly, it helps to maintain and create local jobs. And that's really one of the most important things that we can do, is to drive the local economy. So, I think our policy fails on those points. When we do get a local business that comes within 5%, we're asking them to take a hit. Oftentimes, those may be a small business. And while 5% on a contract may not seem like a substantial sum, looking at it on paper, that may be the difference between them making 4% profit and making no profit, and just trying to get the business so that they can have a relationship with the city in the future. You know, I've looked at the policy for the City of Los Angeles, which I think is a model policy, at least for small businesses, small business entities, that we could address separately from the larger contracts for construction and other large-dollar contracts. And that is, the City of Los Angeles provides that certified small businesses that are located within the city, for contracts that are $100,000 or less, can be given up to a 10% business preference. So, they're local, they're a small business, which means that that additional $3,000, $4,000 is really going to drive their business in terms of profitability. The City of Sacramento provides a 5% local bidder preference, similar to the City of Poway's, but up to 5%. In addition, if they're located in the City of Sacramento, they're given that 1% local sales tax preference as well. So, they're getting up to a 6% local bidder preference. Those cities have done extensive economic studies to determine the long-term economic benefit of providing those local bidder preferences, the separation of larger corporations to the smaller businesses that have a limited gross receipts per year, as has the State of California Department of General Services, which certifies disabled veteran-owned enterprises, as I'm sure you're well aware of their processes. So, I would like us to go back and evaluate opportunities that we could take to develop a policy, maybe it's not 10% for small businesses, maybe it's 5% or 6%, and maybe it's 3% for general local businesses. Whatever that percentage may be, look at our past contract awards, and come back with a policy that really addresses, how do we, as a city, engage our local businesses, and how do we do business? Do we make it easy for them to bid on projects? How are they notified? This month, the State of California opened a new online bid center to encourage small businesses to participate in having an opportunity to do business with the state. Because one of the difficulties is finding out, A, is the city putting out an informal bid? Who is the city contacting? Are we contacting three businesses? Or are we opening it up to the other 20 businesses that we may not even know about that provide that service? How do we post that? Those are all things, I think, are part of local preferences, so that we can not only create opportunities, but we create economic enhancement to the city.
Councilmember Franklin.
This was more kind of educational for me, because I did want to know more about the policy, and I didn't know the specifics of it, so this is good. I didn't realize that our policy was revenue-neutral, and I'm not sure, I don't like that. I like, you know, if you think about the numbers involved, you know, just taking a look at a half-million-dollar contract would be a $25,000 difference, still probably a significant piece of business, if somebody had to change their pricing. So, I'm not sure I take any disagreement with the way the policy's written. One thing I did notice is that, for a lot of us small-business people, you know, I've got four employees in my business, and two of them do happen to live in the City of Vista, myself being one. But there have been many times, as I've operated my business, that I've had three employees that did not live within the city. And being somebody who owns a home in the city and operates a business in the city, I would not have qualified as a local business, and I would have been deeply aggrieved to have learned that if I was eliminated. And for that reason, I do want to suggest that we strike the words "if the business has no employees," so that the line would read, that it employs at least two full-time or four part-time employees whose primary residence is located within the City of Vista, or is at least 50% owned by one or more persons whose primary residences are located within the City of Vista. So that a small business, a truly small business, and we have a lot of truly small-business people in our city, you know, so that that person who lives primary residence in our city and owns a business in our city, I mean, I really don't have a problem with an individual who maybe lives in, you know, Santa Marcos, since there were so many of our neighbors from Santa Marcos here tonight. If they own a business in the City of Vista, have a bona fide business here, you know, I'm not really sure I take umbrage with them having benefit, but I would at least say that I can't conceive of this policy not applying to a business like mine, just because, you know, three of my four employees live in Escondido. That, to me, seems like it would be something that we could fix, minor. That's all I have at this moment. I may have some more thoughts in a minute.
Okay. Councilmember Aguilera.
Thank you, Mayor. I guess I didn't read it that way when we wrote this thing the first time, but is that the way, I mean, I read it now, and that's a good, good point you're making. I mean, his business wouldn't have qualified.
That would be the correct way it reads.
Yeah. Well, that's something I would be interested in changing, but other than that, because myself and the mayor have been involved in proposing this at some point in time, last few years, I like the way it reads. And I think ours plan is a lot more aggressive than some of the other cities. And I do like the fact that we're giving the business, the local business owner, the option to come up to our price, because I think, I think we got, there's two things we have to think about, or two sides to this. There is the business, a local business, that we want to help, but there's also the taxpayer that we have to think about as well. So, I don't agree in paying more to a local business just because they're here locally. I do believe that we want to give them basically a second chance to rebid, and also give them the option. If they don't want to, you know, come up to that price, or in this case, come down to the price, then they have the option of backing out. It's a business decision, and sometimes our local companies, unfortunately, are not going to be competitive, and that's understandable. And, but I do want to make it so that it can be somewhat favorable, and I think the 5% versus 1% in other cities is a lot greater, and like I said, a lot more aggressive. So, I'm in favor with how it reads now, but I do agree with Councilman Franklin that that oversight needs to be addressed. Thank you.
Councilmember Campbell.
Absent talking about the local bidder preference in terms of the dollar amounts, what are our policies in regards to small businesses with prompt payment upon completion or award of a project?
I don't have that information. I turn to City Manager Johnson.
Unless it's specifically written into a contract that we have payment deadlines or milestones, we don't have a prompt payment discount or advantage.
Okay. That would be something I'd like to look at, because I know for a lot of small businesses, putting out a $50,000, a $60,000 contract, even though they're going to make profit off of it, it's hard for them to cover the costs of that for 30 to 45 days. So, I'd like us to look at, I think the state has some very good guidelines on prompt payment for businesses that do business with the State of California and some other cities. So, if we could look at those procedures when, so I know historically, when those agencies were invoiced, if that invoice had a seal that was attached to it that indicated they were a small-business enterprise, they would receive prompt payment status. And if it went over a certain period of time for payment, they would accrue penalty payment because they took 45 days to be paid. So, that encourages businesses to be able to be aware that they're going to get paid within a certain amount of time to do business with that agency.
For the council's knowledge, we have a check run that goes out twice a month. So, it's very likely that if an invoice is processed, it's probably paid within anywhere from seven to 21 days, depending on the timing that it goes in. So, we don't slow pay at all.
And I would say, let's not make things more complicated. I mean, I can see this could get really convoluted and complicated, and so, I would say, let's, I'm happy with this, I'm happy with the changes that Councilmember Franklin suggested, and I'll move on to Deputy Mayor Rigby.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I also agree with the wording that we have in here now. I am, I also agree with Councilman Franklin on making that, tweak it a little bit, so that truly local businesses and local residents, like Councilman Franklin, would not be precluded from that opportunity. That would be upsetting. I would also like to see, if possible, that we have a preference for veterans, and I know that some cities do that, some cities don't. I would like to look into that and see how we could adopt a veteran preference policy, a local veteran preference policy as well. And Councilman Aguilera really nailed it, and what I was going to say, in that we absolutely want to give our local Vista residents and business owners the opportunity to bid and do projects here in the city. We want to give our local people that benefit, to be part of the community. But we also have to be good stewards of the taxpayers' money, and we have to look at what's going to be the best fiscally for the city. So, it is a fine line sometimes, and we have to be careful with tweaking the numbers. So, that would just be my comments on this, and just agree with the Councilman Franklin's issue, and then perhaps looking at what we can do for veterans. Thank you very much for this report.
Councilmember Franklin.
Very quickly, I agree with Deputy Mayor Rigby about having some kind of preference for veterans, and might I suggest that instead of 5%, we have the exact same policy with 1%, so that if they're within 1%, they, that way, if it's like, basically, almost the exact same, they would get that 1%, and we would defer to them. Just a thought.
So, would they get 6% then, you're saying?
No, just 1%.
Veterans would be 1% rather than 5?
Yeah, because what we're saying, are we going to offer this to veterans everywhere in America?
No, local veterans.
So, only Vista veterans?
Local veterans.
So, San Diego County veterans?
I'm open to that.
Yeah. I don't know. I'm open to some slightly deferential, and also revenue-neutral, and I just want to commend the previous council that enacted this. I hadn't realized that we had a revenue-neutral policy, and I like that, that we created something that's fair to the taxpayers and to these local businesses. If there is some way to do something similar for veterans that we could all agree to, I would be, I would be in favor of that. But maybe to a smaller degree, if it's not within the city. And then I just wanted to, I agree with what Councilman Campbell said about paying promptly. It may not be the check request that is slow, it might be the approval of the, you know, whatever program, you know, officers, and I've never heard that we've had a problem with that. But that is definitely something we have to be aware of, because I agree, as a small-business person, you know, credit is always an issue, and cash flow are always critical to jobs like that. So, that's all I've got.
Councilmember Campbell.
Very quickly, as I mentioned earlier about the disabled veteran business-owned enterprises, the state has some very good criteria that I think we could perhaps come back and look at, in terms of what that definition is for the disabled veteran business-owned enterprises locally. And I would personally like to have some options in terms of not just revenue-neutral, but having some options to come back that would allow us to have an actual, true, local bidder preference policy, like other cities in the state provide.
Councilmember, no, Deputy Mayor Rigby.
I just wanted to clarify, if they're Vista veterans, obviously, they get local bidder preference as a Vista resident. So, it'd be Vista residents and then veterans would be the priority. So, just wanted to make that clear, and thank you for the discussion. I think this will be good, coming back.
Darryl Piper, attorney.
Yes, I would just like to mention, in the context of the veterans' preference, I think it will be our strong recommendation that we not attempt to follow guidelines that are issued by the state, but only to recognize people whose businesses are already approved as a veterans' business by some entity that we choose. Otherwise, we have to create an internal bureaucracy, and I can tell you from experience, it is an extremely messy process.
Okay. So, we've given a lot of direction. Have we got enough direction? Okay. Save enough direction? Okay. So, that takes care of discussion item number two. Now, we're moving on to our public hearings. And so, our first public hearing is the Phillips Street Annexation, Reorganization, and a Tentative and Subdivision Map, and Pre-Zoning to our 1B Zone. And so, we'll open the public hearing, and Community Development Director John Conley will introduce this item.
Thank you, Mayor and council. Mr. Finestone, our associate planner, will be giving the presentation here.
Good evening, Mayor Ritter, and city council members. Adam Finestone here, Associate Planner. The item before you tonight is a request for an annexation and reorganization, assignment of a pre-zoning designation, and a tentative subdivision map for Phillips-Santa Fe Vista. The annexation and pre-zoning request involves two existing lots totaling 7.8 acres. The tentative subdivision map is proposed for the larger of those two lots, which is 7.1 acres in size. The smaller lot is being included in the annexation and pre-zoning request due to an existing irrevocable offer of annexation that was recorded against the property when it was provided with sewer service by the city. The proposed tentative subdivision map would create 23 single-family lots, ranging from slightly over 6,000 square feet to approximately 11,500 square feet, at a density of 3.3 units per gross acre. It would also involve, I'm sorry, it would also involve dedic- It would also involve, I'm sorry, it would also involve dedication and improvement of land for public right-of-way purposes, the creation of private streets, and detention basins, along with associated site improvements. And no homes are being proposed at this time. All future homes would be constructed, subject to the development standards for the R1B Zone. This photo shows the existing uses surrounding the subject property. There are single-family residences to the south and west of the site, a church and ballfields to the southeast. The project site is bounded by the Sprinter rail lines and South Santa Fe Avenue to the north, along with various commercial and residential uses beyond that. Subject property would be assigned a pre-zoning designation of R1B, which is a single-family residential zoning designation with a 6,000-square-foot minimum lot size. This would be in conformance with the property's existing general plan land use designation of medium-density residential, allowing a maximum of 10 units per acre. These photos show the existing conditions at the project site. The two on the left are looking at the project site from the current terminus of Phillips Street and towards the current terminus of Phillips Street from near the middle of the property. The barricade shown in the picture on the top left is the approximate property line for the subject property and the city, current city limit. The photo in the upper right shows the project site from South Santa Fe Avenue with the Sprinter line in the front. The existing homes, I'm sorry, the existing home at the top of the hill in the middle of the photo would be removed as part of the project. The photo in the lower right looks west from the project site towards existing residences that back up to the site. The existing city-county boundary separates these homes from the subject property. This exhibit shows the land use and zoning designations for the subject and surrounding properties, with the blue line representing the current city-county boundary. The subject property and those to the south and east have a general plan land use designation of median density and are currently designated and zoned RS Residential Single by the county of San Diego. The proposed pre-zoning designation for the subject property is R1B, and both the city and county zoning designations require a 6,000-square-foot minimum lot size. Properties to the west of the subject site are within the city of Vista and of a general plan designation of MLD, medium-low density, and are zoned R1. Properties on the opposite side of the Sprinter rail line and South Santa Fe Avenue have general, commercial, and medium-high-density general plan designations and associated consistent zoning designations. As stated previously, the application is for the annexation and reorganization involving two parcels. The larger parcel in the map on the left is the one that is proposed for the tentative subdivision map, and the smaller parcel on the right is current, is being concurrently incorporated due to the existence of the irrevocable offer of annexation mentioned previously. Key issues for consideration on this project include general plan consistency and zoning. Since the lots proposed would range from slightly over 6,000 square feet to more than 11,000 square feet, and the project would have a gross density of 3.3 dwelling units per acre, it is consistent with the general plan and zoning designations. The project will provide public and private street improvements, including the dedication and construction of the cul-de-sac, the existing terminus of Phillips Street, and two private streets on-site. It would channel all drainage into the existing storm drain system and would extend public and private utilities onto the site. Due to its adjacency to the Sprinter rail line and the inland rail trail that is proposed upon, along the rail line there, the applicant has worked with Sandag to address and coordinate any construction issues with regard to that rail trail construction. This is a copy here of the tentative subdivision map proposed for the site. You will see that it includes a secondary emergency access road to the site from Han Lea Drive to the, in the county there, shown by the match line, which, you can see, it's at the bottom of the main picture, matches up with the top of the image on the right there. So that drive leads down to Han Lea Drive. Also, please note that the tentative subdivision map does not include the second smaller parcel that is, that is part of the annexation but not part of the map, and that is shown, it's not showing, never mind. Pointer's not working. In order to provide a clearer picture of the project, here's an enlarged exhibit showing the main portion of the project site. The map proposes 23 single-family lots accessed from Phillips Street. The proposed cul-de-sac at the existing terminus of Phillips Street, indicated in blue, would be dedicated as a public street in order to remedy the barricaded dead-end condition that currently exists. The 23 lots would be served by two private streets, shown in red. While not shown on the map, there is also a potential that the private streets would be gated, and access to the site has been designed to accommodate that. Three detention basins are proposed for the site, shown in green, two of them near the site entrance, and one towards the east end of the site. And the aforementioned inland rail trail runs between the project site and the Sprinter rail line that's shown in orange here. The trail will be part, will be partially on the project site and partially within the Sprinter rail right-of-way. Landscaping for this site meets requirements of the city's landscape ordinance and landscape manual, including planting of street trees and slopes as erosion control measures. The plantings would consist of a mix of native and non-native plant materials and would meet water efficiency standards established by the city and the state of California. A plentiful retaining wall with a maximum height of up to 15 feet would be placed along the north side of the site between it and the railroad tracks. Six-foot privacy fences would be provided in the rear yards of the adjacent, of properties with adjacent homes existing next to them, and five-foot safety fences would be provided at the top and bottom of slopes between the backyards and the retaining wall adjacent to the railroad tracks. Mitigated negative declaration was prepared and circulated for the project between August 10th and September 8th of 2015. Eight comments letter, eight comment letters were received and responses were provided to them. The letters and responses have been included with the mitigated negative declaration that's in your packet. The proposed density of 3.3 dwelling units per acre is well below the maximum 10 dwelling units per acre allowed by the general plan. While lot sizes for the proposed subdivision are somewhat smaller than the minimum allowed in the R1 Zone to the west, that was shown on a previous slide, the overall density and development pattern of the proposed subdivision is consistent with the area. All future homes will also be required to meet the development standards in the R1B Zone. The Planning Commission recommended approval of the project at a public hearing on October 6th, 2015, with an added condition regarding the safety fences along the slopes behind the homes on the north side of the site. Staff recommends that the city council adopt resolutions approving the mitigated negative declaration and mitigation monitoring and reporting program, allowing application to be made to LAFCO for the annexation, and approving the tentative subdivision map. This concludes my presentation, and I'm available for any questions the council may have at this time.
I have one speaker, which is the applicant. Do you want to hear from him first? Okay. Okay, John Stremmer?
Mayor Ritter, City Council members, my name is John Stremmer, PO Box 687, Del Mar, California. I represent the application in front of you. I would like to concur with staff's presentation and request that you approve the project as conditioned and proposed by staff. And what I'd like to do is, rather than be redundant with what he's presented to you, I'd like to spend a second and give you a little quick history as to what transpired here. And the real intention is to thank these two young men who've done an unbelievable job over the three years that we started ago, and went through the process of trying to work with Sandag through their processes of getting the bicycle trail started and into the process. And with that, staff worked with us to communicate with Sandag and did a great job helping us communicate as to the transition to the actual construction of the trailer, trail, and as the city takes over their obligations and the management of that process as the project comes into the city and gets done. Done a great job. They've done an unbelievable job, I think. I've been doing this for 35 years, and I'm amazed today of how quickly the governmental systems are changing and what these poor guys have to go through on a daily basis of trying to adapt to water quality changes and all the other things that are out there. I think you should be proud of who you have. Anyway, we started three years ago to go through this process. We got caught up in the process of the condemnation. We sat down with Sandag and agreed that we wanted to be a supporter of that process because we see it as a very positive thing for the project as well as the community. So we went through a year and a half of legal expenses and time of trying to make sure that the project would dovetail between Sandag's requirements of getting the job done in a economic, quick process, and making sure that the project could also proceed forward in its own format. So we spent an inordinate amount of hours between attorneys and whatever else, allowing the perfect situation come up that allows both parties to proceed going down the road. And today, we're continuing that process, and in fact, on Thursday, we will be getting together with the, some of the utilities to try to dovetail those items together so it's economical and practical as far as Sandag, so as they proceed forward for the construction of that rail trail. And they have communicated with us, and I'm sure with staff, that they intend on proceeding forward sometime June of this year with the actual construction of that portion of the trail. So that's really wonderful. Outside of that, once again, I'd like to say thank you and really request that you approve the application as proposed by staff.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions after him? No? Okay. No questions of you?
I have one comment.
Okay.
Yeah, just thank you for recognizing staff and for the work that they put in. We appreciate that.
Thank you all.
We think we have the best.
They are.
We agree.
Thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Camp.
I'd like to make a motion to close the public hearing and adopt the resolutions recommended by staff.
Before you close it, I have one other speaker. You okay? One other speaker, Tom Fleming.
Just real quickly, as a planning commissioner, I want to encourage you to approve this. We listened to quite a bit of testimony that night, and this is one of the projects that is owned. It's houses, it's not apartments, it's parked, it's laid out, the landscaping is sufficient to protect erosion. It's a good, good plan, so I just wanted to encourage you to support it.
Okay, so now we close the public hearing and...
And, yeah, I made the motion to adopt the resolutions recommended by staff to approve this project.
Okay. Councilmember Aguilera.
Thank you. I think I'll, well, hold off. I have a question. So the private street parking, how does that, how does that stuff come up? And, I mean, I know how it's maintained, and I see several private streets throughout our city, and some look great, others not so great. And I'm not sure, you know, I just want to make sure that down the road, 20, 30 years from now, that these, the street's going to look good. And what, I guess what caused it to be a private street? Is there, is there a way to ensure that the street is going to be maintained?
Yes, actually, we have an agreement, excuse me, an improvement agreement with a developer that requires that they maintain the private street to a certain standard, and it's under the obligation of the association for the project to maintain not only the street, but the drainage facilities and all the other private improvements. The reason that we've moved away from public streets for these residential projects is just a cost burden on the city. We, for the most part, in private development, require private streets for just about anything now, primarily as, like I said, because of the cost to maintain it in perpetuity, and we can impose an agreement on the developers for the ultimate maintenance of the street. So the older streets that you see built back in the county days that are private, that don't maybe have a developed agreement or a real good maintenance tool, are not very well-maintained because it's just up to the owners to come together and do it nowadays with all the requirements that are imposed as conditions of development. There's guaranteed maintenance in perpetuity on all these...
Well, how do we ensure that? I don't get that.
We basically can require them to improve it if it's not meeting our standards. So if the street's all torn up and we have a maintenance agreement with them, we can go in and say, "Your maintenance agreement says you have to, you know, provide to a certain standard, and you're not doing so." And then ultimately, if they won't comply, we work through the city attorney's office to pursue, you know, violation of that condition. If they don't have the money to do it, I don't know what to do, but we certainly have a path to do it, and most CCNRs stay fully, you know, funded enough to accommodate their maintenance obligations.
Is it possible that the city has to go in and potentially fix a street and then bill the owners?
We don't typically do that. If there's a real safety issue or a broken pipe or something, depending on whose fault it is, that sometimes happens. But if a private street's run down and the property owners aren't maintaining it, that's their problem.
Hmm. That's what I hate to hear.
Are the streets built to the same standards as the public streets?
Absolutely.
Same thickness of asphalt, or whatever it is?
Can look at any of the projects built, you know, within the last 20 or 30 years that have had agreements in place. The streets are all very well-maintained by the association. Shatter Ridge is a great example of that. The private streets down there are very well-maintained. It's the old county roads that are not, and it's hard to go back and fix those.
Okay. I'll go ahead and second it. Other than that, I'm fully supportive, and I think the planning commission did do a good job. It's a nice project. I like the fact that they're coming in, you know, below on the, as far as the dwelling units per acre, that's great. Like you said, it's self-parked and that, I mean, it's everything we asked for, it's incorporating Sandag's rail trail, which we've all been looking forward to and waiting and waiting on. So, yeah, I definitely will second the motion.
Deputy Mayor Rigby.
In the chapter three of the initial study for environmental checklist, it talks about the traffic, just to bang on that drum some more. And it talks about those three particular intersections, Santa Fe Drive at Mar Vista, Phillips at Mar Vista, and Avocado at Mar Vista. Is this the same intersection that we talked about a couple of years ago with the other project on Santa Fe where the developer was going to put in a roundabout?
Yes.
Okay. I don't see, I, there's a paragraph here, "Under mitigation measure, the applicant shall participate in the city's impact fees for arterial streets and traffic signals program to pay for its fair share of mitigation for cumulative impacts at the intersection of Avocado and Mar Vista." My question is, how are we defining fair share, and what would be the mitigation of the cumulative impacts of the traffic there where it's already an F and it's going to get even worse than F, although we don't have another letter to assign to it? What is the developer in this case offering to help with mitigating that particular intersection?
So the traffic improvement fee is based on a citywide assessment of what improvements need to happen to build out our general plan. So that's considered a fair share. If there's a cumulative impact to the overall system, they pay their per square foot or per unit fee, and that's their fair share. So their payment of our normal fees accommodates the cumulative impact, the slight increase of traffic resulting from their development. Their traffic report that they prepared for this project showed that they don't trigger a direct impact at that intersection, so we can't require this developer to build that improvement as a result of his project. He can contribute to it, and his fees will go toward it, but he wasn't ultimately required to build the roundabout that we imposed on the apartment developer down the street.
Well, I recognize that 23 single-family homes is a lot less than what had been proposed in the other project. I understand that, but it is a heavy intersection already, and I know that 23 homes won't significantly impact what's already happening there. But how, and this is a traffic question, so I don't know if you want to answer it, if we can at this time. Is there anything on the table that we're looking at to help with that intersection? I know the roundabout isn't happening at this point, but is there anything else that we're looking at?
For that intersection? No, the roundabout is the fix. If we don't build the roundabout or don't, the apartment development doesn't move forward and build the roundabout, we don't have a backup plan at this point to do something different. We were hoping that that project would move forward, and they would be able to build the improvements, and the city wouldn't have to do it. If the council wants to revisit that issue, the CIP is coming up, and we can talk about it as part of that discussion.
Okay. Thank you for your report and being so helpful.
Councilmember Franklin.
I just wanted to quickly say, and I'm not asking the developer to pay any more than their fair shares we've defined it here, but I just want to take a minute to say, I think we really should prioritize that traffic circle one way or another and move forward with it, because it's a real, it's a real weak point in one of our major arterial systems.
With that, I have a motion and a second, and I see no further discussion, so please cast your vote. cast your vote. Motion passes unanimously. So, the next thing on our agenda, public hearing number two, which are multifamily design guidelines amendments and so, where am I gonna, I'm on the wrong page here, hold on. Ah, John Conley again, Community Development Director, John Conley's gonna present that and it's like Pat C. Chow.
Thank you, Mayor. Ms. Chow will be making the presentation.
Good evening, Mayor Ritter, councilmembers, Pat C. Chow, City Planner. The item before you this evening is regarding amendments to the multifamily design guidelines. The proposed amendments shown on the following slides are in response to a joint workshop that was held by the City Council and the Planning Commission on May 5th, 2015 and also per the Planning Commission's recommendation to the City Council at their meeting on October the 6th. First off, guideline number 29 deals with chain link fencing. So, we've added a statement that chain link fencing is prohibited. As far as guideline number 32, we modified the existing guideline to actually add the half-basketball court, totlot, fire pit and lounge area to the list of possible amenities for multifamily projects. And in that same guideline, we've revised the tier system to actually lower the threshold so we would require at 10 units or greater, at least one amenity to be provided, at 25, at least two, and at 50 units, at least three of the amenities from the list. There was some discussion at the joint workshop about washer and dryer hookups to be required in each of the units. That is actually is an existing guideline in the document, so just wanting to point that out. There's also an existing guideline that talks about and addresses roofline variation, so that's guideline 42, that addresses roof designs to include offsetting roof planes and rooflines to encourage the, and add visual interest and help break up building masses into smaller modules, so that's already in the document. At the joint workshop, there was a discussion about garage access and trying to provide direct connection to the units. So, this guideline number 39 has been added in response to the joint workshop so that garage access will be internally provided to the main residential building or directly connecting the individual units to the garage or by way of an interior corridor, connecting the garages to the units where it's visible. We've also added a guideline about quality of materials to be used, guideline number 31, and where the applicant needs to provide detailed information on materials that are used in the form of a material sample board and providing specifications so that we can ensure quality of the product that's used on the buildings and the exterior of the units. Last but not least, on page 16, we've added a statement to acknowledge the use of design standards whenever it's applicable and practicable as far as the rehabilitation of existing multifamily buildings so that we can make sure that there is also high-quality developments continuance with regards to rehabbing buildings, rehabilitating buildings. And in response to the discussions at the joint workshop, we have implemented the early design review process, started last year in September. We have several gone through this process at Planning Commission for mixed-use and multifamily projects and that has allowed for early discussion of design reviews. With that, staff's recommendation is for approving the amendments to design guidelines for multifamily development. That concludes my presentation and I'm available for any questions you may have. Thank you.
And we have one speaker. Do you want to hear the speaker? Yes? Okay, Michael McSweeney.
Happy New Year, Vista councilmembers and Madam Mayor. I'm Michael McSweeney, Senior Public Policy Advisor at the Building Industry Association. And the point I wanted to make tonight was, every one of these types of policy changes comes with a cost. So, it sounds good that a development of 10 units has to have one amenity. Do any of you know what a totlot costs or a fire pit? So, let me use an example of the law of unintended consequences. Staff in Carlsbad thought it would be a good idea to have a $20 a square foot fee tacked on to new residential apartment construction to fund affordable housing. But nobody knew what it costs. So, at the hearing, they asked the consultant from the city, "Well, what is this cost in the rent?" Well, it adds $90 to all the other apartments that aren't affordable. So, when you talk about design guidelines and putting things in, keep in mind that you won't be councilmembers or mayor for life, there will be people that follow you. So, the more things you embed in codes or the more standards you have, future councils could change it. I know that, Madam Deputy Mayor, you are very interested in design and a lot of projects come forward that you don't like. But put yourself in the shoes of a builder, not knowing what any one of you five like or dislike, what trips your trigger, what doesn't. And so, what I would recommend, and I know that I've spoken to a few of you offline, you all own something similar to this. This is your most important tool. And I think the smartest way for you to get more projects that all of you like is to, once at a minimum, but twice a year, I would suggest in your community center behind, hold a two-hour meeting, invite the public, invite members of the building industry to bring forward design ideas. And in the meantime, in the six months between those, any project that you see, there's, there's just one landscape element, there's one type of entry that you like, bring that picture, print it out and talk to it. Learn from the developers, "Well, what does that cost?" Because right now, you're making policy decisions without any knowledge of, "What does this cost? What does this add to a project? Who pays for it?" Eventually, it's either the person that buys the house or pays the rent. So, I would suggest that if you want to have the most and best design guidelines, more interaction with the people that actually build the buildings is the best way to get it. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. Otherwise, thank you.
Thank you. Councilor Campbell?
I may not be the person that you would expect to hear this from, but a lot of these add-ons, I don't personally care for too much requiring because when it comes to multifamily, you know, we're, we're going down to 10 units for a project and we're asking them to add on an additional amenity which is gonna add substantially to the overall cost of that project, which adds to the rent substantially. You know, we're already dealing with very high rents for apartments in multifamily in Vista. And a 10-unit project is a very small project. A 25-unit project is a very small project. The land that we have available left for development in the city is often small parcels. And adding in two amenities on a 25-unit project is taking up quite a bit of space for those projects. The other one, washer dryer hookups required in each unit. Those seem to be market determining factors or the market should determine those factors, whether someone wants to rent a unit that has washer dryer hookups or if they want to move to a complex that doesn't have washer dryer hookups. That's something that's more of a market-driven choice by the consumer versus us, are we going to ask them to start putting in granite countertops and tile floors in every unit? That's where we're slowly headed with this. So, now we're asking washer dryer hookups, two amenities and our parking standards, our roof design guidelines, garage access directly internal to the, to the building and directly into the individual unit. We're, I mean, I don't know, are we doubling the cost? Are we tripling the cost of what it otherwise could be constructed as a quality project that people want to live in? Not everybody wants a basketball court and a fire pit and they're not gonna use it. That seems to be a consumer-choice driven factor. We're getting to the point of, we're, we're gonna start requiring every multifamily to be a quote-unquote luxury apartment development, which may look nice from the outside, but we're pricing out local Vista residents from being able to live in a quality development. So...
Deputy Mayor Rigby?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I would, first off, like to say on guideline number 31, pardon me, the examples of, excuse me, the examples of the materials that would be used on the exterior and the interior. I know that we had, had suggested receiving samples prior to, and I see that the Planning Commission had stricken out for interior samples. I would like to keep that one in considering the number of people that I've spoken to over the last few years who have some questions or issues or problems with some of the interior material. And I don't see that it would be burdensome, if it, if it would be, please correct me, for requiring not just, not just exterior samples but interior. Would that be overly burdensome for developers to provide?
That might be better asked of the BIA representative that's here tonight.
Mr. McSweeney, would you like to ask her for me? Why it wouldn't be feasible to, to have them provide an interior sample as well as an exterior sample? Okay.
What you're asking for is, who's making the determination? The market or the councilmember? And developers spend thousands upon thousands of dollars doing market-driven research to know what consumers want. So, you can do that, but I would say let the market decide. If somebody picks hideous shag carpet, ugly flooring, obnoxious Formica countertops, how well are those units gonna sell?
Okay. I'm gonna back that up a little bit. I don't really care much about the granite countertops with shag gold carpet. The questions that have been presented to me have to do with quality of the drywall, quality of the glue used on the tiles or it surrounds and things like that. That's what I'm talking about. So, the staff who has the expertise in those material quality areas that I do not possess would know the quality of the interior materials. Color of the granite is irrelevant to me, I don't care about that.
It sounds to me like what you're talking about is more workmanship than materials. A sheet of drywall is a sheet of drywall. There's, I think, three manufacturers that make them, virtually identical. It's how it's put up. If tiles are popping off, it's not the tile, it's how it was installed.
Is there not a difference in the quality of materials as well? I mean, there, there is...
Well, of course, there is. I mean, the difference between marble and tile.
Okay. You've answered my question.
Thank you.
Thank you. The other question I have or the, the comment I have is I have to agree with Councilman Campbell on the amenities and the provisions. I think requiring provisions of amenities going down to 10 units is a bit excessive and expensive and, and I wouldn't want to change that particularly. And even in looking at 20, I mean, and I know I've said in the past, you really, if you're gonna do a high-end facility, you need to have amenities for the residents. But I recognize that not every facility is gonna have that, especially if there are a very, very small one at 10 units. So, I, I would be hesitant to change what we already have in our current design guidelines. And then as far as design guideline number 39 and the garage access to the interior units, you know, I brought that up a couple of years ago, that's been a huge thing for me and I want to say thank you for putting that in the design, the design guidelines. So, thank you.
Councilor Aguilera?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm all for striking number 32. I, I think that Mr. McSweeney makes a good point and others have as well. But some of the other things I think are pretty important.
Just for clarification?
Yes.
We have that guideline currently for a different number of units, so it's one amenity for 25, two amenities for 50, three amenities for 100.
Stick with what we have.
Okay.
Yes, sorry. As far as the internal parking, I think that's a, a safety issue and I think that is something that the city can get involved in. And so, I'm, I'm okay with that as well and I agree with some of the outer requirements, the roof design and that, because that's something that we always seem to spend time on. I think what we're, we know that we agree on that, Planning Commission seems to agree on that. I think what we're trying to do is communicate to the development industry what's gonna happen when they step in the doors of your offices and then ultimately, if they end up in, in our chambers here, we just, we just don't want surprises. So, I think if they know what's required of them, they will provide that, they will decide if that's feasible or not, because I think the biggest thing for businesses is the surprises. So, I think if anything that we can do to, to make it clear to them that this has been an issue in our city with our commission or our, our city council, I'm all for supporting that. But I'm certainly not in favor of picking out materials and carpets and all that. I don't think Deputy Mayor is in favor of that either. As far as the other issues, I'm, I'm very supportive of them. I think the, the one that's kind of a question mark and probably is market-driven is the washer and dryer hookups. I'm not sure if we should be requiring that. I think that's a, a nice amenity and I think that certainly dictates the type of project you're probably gonna be building and who you're trying to appeal to. So, you know, I think we have to probably allow the market to go ahead and determine that one as well. Thank you.
Councilmember Aguilera?
Yes.
Madam Mayor, may I point out clarification on guideline number 32. On the slide, we were proposing or based on the conversation at the joint workshop, adding the half-basketball court, the totlot and fire pit as additional amenities to the list. Is that something that is, that you had concerns about that as well?
Those are options though, right?
Correct. It's just adding more to the list, basically.
No, I think, yeah, because I think, like we said, we're trying to let the market determine what they're trying to appeal to and if a basketball court is something better than a fire pit, you know, maybe Mr. Campbell doesn't wanna sit around the fire pit, but he wants to play basketball or, you know, vice versa. I want to sit around the fire pit and watch him play basketball, I don't know. You know, let the market determine it. So, if we can get, give the developers more options to satisfy the needs and to meet the needs of their people, their, their buyers, I'm all for that too.
Okay. Thank you.
I guess my concern always is that, you know, if you, for making just, we have so few parcels left in this and so, so what we're building, we, we have a right to have nicer apartments that, and what we're building right now. And so, I, you know, if you want just jobs, I mean, it's just homes and we don't have to build nice things, but if you want, if we have good jobs in Vista, they want nice homes, a nice higher quality. And I, and I would tell you, you know, I've shown some apartments down in, or condos and homes actually condos, down in San Diego that didn't have laundry and I'm in, I mean, or they had laundry room that was kind of nasty actually. And so, I, if, you know, I'm thinking the, the people that you want to move into Vista, if you want people that have expendable income and, and better jobs, then you've gotta have better apartments. So, you know, we have, we have affordable apartments now and so, I think we need some nicer apartments. I mean, we're building some, but I, I think that's important, or nicer condos, that's, that would be my thing. So, Councilmember Franklin?
Mayor, I agree with what you're saying and, you know, I thank Mr. McSweeney for being here and I generally, you, all my comments are, are in favor of lightening the burden for people that want to create investment in our city. But I very much agree, and I was telling one of you this recently, or maybe I was telling Patrick this, somebody said to me, you know, when I was very, I'm still very early in my time on the council, but somebody said to me in my first month in the council, "Do you feel that it's your job to represent everybody that might live in the city of Vista or everybody who does live in the city of Vista?" And that hit me pretty hard and I agree, our burden up here is to represent the people who live in our city now. In higher-quality developments, we tend to bring people who bring a net positive and, you know, in, what, what our experience shows us in some of the units that we've built throughout the city in the past that were of a lower standard is that we have higher calls for service because the property taxes are lower, we have lower services, we have lower property tax revenue to cover those costs of services. And so, really, it's a double-edged sword. And I think what we've seen from the development community in our city of late has been really wonderful, seen some excellent projects, but how do we continue to make sure that the direction is going in the right way? And, you know, and I'm, I'm always struck by our neighbors around us who seem to have made different choices than Vista did and the direction that their city's gone demonstrates a different thought pattern. And, you know, for me, I think, I agree with having washer and dryer hookups because I very much agree. We, we're sitting right here and we have a, a simple choice, do we want to attract residents to Vista who need to go to the laundry room or go to the, the laundromat on the Friday night or do we want to invite people to live in our city who are gonna go to eat at the Flying Pig on Friday night? I mean, no, it's a, you know, it's a really, it's a, it's a, that's a choice that we have to make. And for the people who are already taxpayers at every level of income, from the poorest of our residents to the richest, I think it's, I think it's in all of their interest to attract people to the city who... to attract people to the city who can provide a financial net positive, who can provide human capital that's valuable, who do not add to any of our crime problem, but improve it, who add to our community. So for all those reasons, I do think there's a lot of value in these standards, even though, you know, we have to entreat our development community to tell us when we're, you know, when we're making dire mistakes. And I agree, maybe with your help, we could organize that kind of a conference with developers at least once a year to begin with, where we can get some feedback from them. Because, you know, it's interesting, we hear from a lot of folks that we're the best city to work with, and then occasionally, somebody will go, "You know, Vista's the worst city to work with." And we go, "Really? That's, you know, that's interesting." The diversity of perspectives that we hear, and definitely like more feedback. And I know our staff does a great job of soliciting that feedback. Do you think that this is going to harm our ability to attract investment in Vista, or do you think it, what do you think? From what you've, the feedback you've had from the development community, I know I'm asking you to speculate here quite a bit, but...
We're not getting any lighter on the applications that are coming in the door, that's for sure. So I don't think it's going to really negatively affect the development potential that we offer here in the future.
And if the direction of the market changes in the future, then maybe it's a policy we have to readdress, but right now, while times are still good and people are building, I think it's wise that we choose the best quality projects for our city. That's all I've got to say.
Councilor Campbell.
Brief follow-up. You know, I'm going to vote no on this item. I know, Staff, you've put a great amount of effort into this, and I appreciate your effort from the direction you got from the council. But I share a slightly different vision, that I'm not just looking to bring in new people to the city, new families that have disposable income. I also have to look out for the interests of those that already live here. And building new apartment complexes whose rents are affordable to our demographic who live in the city of Vista is a key component of the criteria that I utilize to define a quality project. I don't want every new apartment complex we build to have rents of $2,500 a month, because we require them to line the driveways with marble tile and make the roof lines have three-dimensional effects and look like it's a resort. That sounds great in theory, but it's going to drive out people who have lived here in Vista from affordability. So I think that we need to, excuse me. So I think there's some good points brought up from the council. We obviously all want quality projects. We may disagree a little bit on what the quality means, but I'm afraid that requiring too many amenities tips the scale to make it unattainable for thousands of Vista families who've lived here, they're second generation, third generation, they have a college degree, but they can afford rents here, nonetheless buying a home. So the more criteria that we put on those units, whether it's washer dryer hookups, it sounds great in theory, but that adds an extra cost. We want quality interiors. Well, they're not going to rent for as high of a dollar amount if they're not a quality interior. And the developer, maybe if Mr. McSweeney could correct me if I'm wrong, but the developers of projects are looking to optimize their investment to the greatest extent possible. And they're looking to provide the best product within that community and rent it for as high of a dollar amount as they're going to be able to. So my understanding is that most developers, they're doing market research. They're looking at what fits within each community. We may not be able to drive the same market rents as downtown San Diego, even if we build the exact same product. So I think that you're looking to have, your members are looking to optimize their investment dollar to the best extent possible. They're not going to build a shoddy construct project, because it's not going to command as high of a rents as they want. Would that be a fair assessment?
Somewhat. You're mixing two issues, and all of you have in one form or another. Shoddy workmanship, poor construction, those are construction defects. Those are different than a bad design, bad amenities, or the types of materials. But what I will share you with is, I have, in my capacity at BIA, the opportunity to talk to developers. So oftentimes, I get to talk to the president or vice president, and I ask questions all the time, because I'm tasked with, affordable housing is one of the issues that I'm responsible for in the BIA. So how can we provide affordable housing when I'm talking to develop, "Why are you building these expensive apartments?" Because the market is brutally efficient. It's what the market is demanding. Quite frankly, your generation, the millennials, they don't want, they're putting off homeownership, but they want to have a really nice place, they want to have really nice amenities. And quite frankly, that's the only thing that they can get financing for that pencils out in this market. So I live over by, across from San Diego State. Coleman College had a campus, it was a strip center along, right fronting Interstate 8. They tore it down, they put in 200 units, they're running at $2,250 a month. So I understand what all of you are asking for, and I think a better dialogue with the industry, so that you can ask questions, so you can say, "I saw this, I really like the look of this." Then you find out that that's $500 a square foot construction cost, and that's only the Class A luxury, $2,500 a month rents. So that's not going to fit what you're looking for. And there's, it's supply and demand, but there's so many things that factor in, and yes, nobody is going to build a project unless it pencils out and they get a rate of return.
And I think that kind of goes back to, there's a great example of our, in my opinion, council overreach in requiring too many criteria, was the project where we talked about the roundabout on Avocado, to where that project doesn't look like it's moving forward, because it doesn't pencil out for them anymore. We reduced the number of units allowed for them on-site, we required them to go back and redesign it, add extra amenities, put garages where they went straight into the units. By the time you do all those things, it sounds great, but now it's not feasible for them to build that project. And that's what I'm concerned we've done too often, and adding extra requirements just adds to the baseline. So now, instead of an applicant coming to us and saying, "We're adding washer and dryer hookups in the unit as a positive," now we've made that a requirement. So we're going to add more requirements on top of that baseline. So those are my concerns. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Deputy Mayor Rigby.
Thank you. Was I incorrect when washer dryer hookups are currently in the design guideline, right? Okay. First, I want to say thank you for the work you did on preparing this, and I want to thank the Planning Commission for the work that you did in discussing these items and coming up with some of these things, and certainly to Mr. McSweeney for being here tonight and answering our questions and trying to help us on with this. I appreciate that very much. And we're talking about the laundry hookup, and it is an amenity that I think is important for quality of life, if nothing else. So I would like to see that stay in the guideline. I don't know if it's something to think about to add it to the list of possible amenities, or if that just gives developers an option to opt out of doing it altogether. So I would still be in favor of keeping it, because I think, I don't consider having a washer and dryer to be a luxury in my life. With my family, I consider a washer and dryer to actually be a necessity in life. So I'd like to keep that. But with that, I'd like to close the public hearing and move that we approve the design guidelines with the corrections that we made this evening as counsel.
Will you state what the corrections were again, please?
Thank you.
Because there are a lot of us talk here.
We, the corrections were to keep guideline 32 as it is currently written in the guidelines, not to change it. And 29?
Chain link fence.
Oh, the chain link fence, yes. 29, the five-foot height. Let's see. 29, adding a statement that the chain link fencing is prohibited. Guideline 32, keeping it as it is currently written. Guideline 35, as it's currently written. Guideline 42, as it's presented in the staff report. Currently written.
Currently written.
And 31, 30, sorry, I'm looking, it's out of order in the staff report. 39, keeping the, well, that was just saying, "Thank you." 39 was just adding 39 for the garage interior access, which I do find a public safety issue, which is why I brought that up before. I think I got all of them.
But I think the only caveat to that was, did we not want to include the additional amenity choices? I think we did want to do that, didn't we?
On the interior? On the interior.
No, the half-basketball court, the tot lot, the fire pit lounge area, adding that to the list of possible amenities. Okay.
We don't add them as options? No, we're leaving them as options?
We're adding them as options.
Okay, yeah, yeah.
Miss City Clerk, Mrs. Valdez, did you get all of that? Is that an adequate motion?
Yeah, and did you, you added the interiors as well as the exterior?
The samples, keeping that one?
Materials, sample materials, or no?
I guess if Mr. McSweeney's point is taken, that my issue with that is the craftsman workmanship. So the Planning Commission's recommendation to drop the interior, add that to...
We got it. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Did you get a second?
Second.
Motion passes with one no vote. Okay, so that takes us to oral communications, and this person, he's no longer here. So, oh, we have one more speaker. We had Cliff Kaiser here. Did you want to talk, Cliff, on the, no. Your thing came in late, so then I, okay. Okay, so then, let's see, the next thing, we don't have any speakers this evening, so any comments? I'll start with, Deputy Mayor Rigby, you want any comments this evening?
I just want to say thank you to everyone who attended this evening, and Happy New Year. I wish everyone a very, very Happy New Year. And I will be heading up to Sacramento next week for policy committee meetings for the League of Cities, so I'll have a report for you when I come back.
Okay. Councilmember Franklin?
No comments.
Councilmember Campbell?
I have no comments this evening.
Councilmember Aguilera?
No comments.
Okay, and I just, and tonight...
Wrong, but no comments.
No comment, okay. I just wanted, during tonight's meeting in honor of the memory of Harlan Dunn, who just recently passed away, which was very shocking and very sad. So we'll adjourn to our meeting this evening in his memory. With that, we are adjourned. No, we aren't. Patrick, I have announcements I was supposed to make. Okay, so forget that for a minute. City's accepting applications for the 2016 Spring Leadership Academy, which provides a great opportunity to learn more about city operations. Vista residents and business owners can register online at thecityofvista.com for the seven-week program that begins March 2nd. The city's updating its citywide parking regulations. The second in a series of three community meetings is being held on Tuesday, January 19th at 6:00 p.m. here in the Civic Center council chambers, to gather ideas and input from residents. And so information is available also on our website at cityofvista.com on that workshop. And the last one, beginning January 23rd, you can order your subscriptions to the 2016 Moonlight Summer Seasons productions, as well as packages and single tickets to the Moonlight Presents series. The summer season productions are Sister Act, Peter Pan, Titanic, The Musical, and the Addams Family. And visit moonlightstage.com for details, and get your tickets, because that's a, Moonlight is a wonderful place in the summer, and they have the greatest shows. So with that, I'll pass it to my city manager, who probably has things to say, too.
Couple of things to say, Mayor, thank you. Want to congratulate Jeff Hahn, who is our new fire chief, with the retirement of Rick Minnick at the end of the month. So Jeff is in the back in the suit with the tie, and welcome him as fire chief with over 30 years in the city.
Yay!
I also want to welcome our new sheriff's captain. As all of you know, Larry Nesbit was promoted to commander, and so we have Chuck Cinemo, who's also in the back, who's going to stand up and come forward just to say thank you. Chuck is, Chuck is our new captain, and was in the city of Vista as a lieutenant previously, and we want to welcome Chuck back. He's a great addition to the department. Do you have a couple of comments? I want to thank Public Works for taking great care of the city last week during the storms. The rainy season is upon us, apparently, and we had some minor flooding issues because of the inundation of the rain. That subsided, but no major flooding issues. We also had the, what they call the microburst, that occurred over on Seaview, with nine properties sustaining damage. But overall, Vista fared very well, with the exception of those nine properties, obviously. But I want to say thank you to Public Works. Seven to 800 sandbags were passed out to Vista residents, and if anybody needs any tips on emergency preparedness, they can go to cityofvista.com for that. Also, if you would like to register your cell number with the county to receive emergency notifications, you can do that as well. Go to readysandygo.org. And lastly, the city will be closed on Monday in honor of Martin Luther King Day, and the Vista Library will be closed as well, but trash pickup will remain on the normal schedule. So, thank you.
Okay. With that...
Darryl Piper.
Oh, Darryl Piper. And Kathy, am I getting anxious to go home or something?
No comment, thank you.
Maybe I'm hungry. Okay, Kathy, do you have anything tonight? No? Okay, with that, are we okay now? Everyone, we're adjourned.